Hi, thanks for joining us on livestream. My name is Robert Lane and I'm the Acting Manager of the Office of Administrative Counsel and Rules with the Department of Health. We're still waiting for some people to show up. We'll probably get started with the hearings at around 9:10, once more people show up and turn in comment cards. Thank you. I think we're going to go ahead and get started. Good morning. My name is Robert Lane and I'm the Acting Manager of the Office of Administrative Counsel and Rules with the Department of Health. Seated at the tables behind me are Dr. Cara Christ, Don Harrington, and Laura Oxley. We are here to listen to comments about the possibility of adding to the list of debilitating medical conditions for medical marijuana, migraines, post-traumatic stress disorder, and depression. I will facilitate this meeting. When you enter the lobby area, you should have picked up and completed a speaker slip if you plan to make public comments about the conditions. Please be sure you have completed this or you may not be called to speak. Each speaker will be limited to five minutes. For migraines, you will be prompted when there's one minute remaining, 30 seconds remaining, and then you need to finish. This meeting is a public comment meeting. It will consist of department staff listening to your comments and concerns about adding these three medical conditions to the list of debilitating medical conditions. The meeting is not to discuss a possible addition of these three medical conditions or listen to comments about adding other medical conditions or changing the rules or regulations for medical marijuana. When giving oral comments, please limit your comments to the medical condition dedicated for this time slot only. Please focus on how the specified medical condition or treatment of the medical condition affects the ability of a person to accomplish activities of daily living. What other conventional medical treatments are available to provide relief and what scientific evidence there is that the use of marijuana will provide relief for the medical condition or treatment of medical condition. We will listen to comments about migraines until 10:00 a.m. We will listen to comments about PTSD until 11:00 a.m. And we will listen to comments about depression until noon. Please only address the condition being discussed during that time when you are called. Do not hesitate to express support or opposition to earlier comments, but please try to avoid repetition. We may ask you questions while you are talking to clarify your position. You may also submit written comments today using the computers located in the back room as you exit the state laboratory. Please submit all written comments 5:00 p.m. today, Tuesday, October 29, 2013. Your input will be considered when deciding whether to add medical conditions to the list of debilitating medical conditions for medical marijuana. The comment period for migraines is now going to begin. If you wish to give an oral comment today, please approach the microphone when your name has been called. When you speak, please state your full name, and if applicable, identify the organization you are representing. And we will begin with comments about migraines. And the first speaker slip is Mr. Raymond Black. Please.
I turned in my driver's license. It scared me so bad because one day I was driving and my right side went out. I thought it was a stroke, but it wasn't. It was just my brain. All the drugs they had me on was making me worse. They actually know I'm allergic to opiates and all narcotics. So I have my current medical card for that reason. But there was a law before this law that people tend to forget that was shoved in the back of the books in Arizona. In 2006, doctors could write prescriptions if they deemed marijuana could help things. I have two from two doctors in this state written orally for marijuana to prevent my migraine headaches because when I eat my cannabis, it prevents my migraine headaches from happening. And anyone can see these. They can be copied for the board to look at. They're written by two doctors in this state under the old law in Arizona. And I still see the current doctor, Dr. Michael Wade, on a monthly basis for my migraines. I also use Maranal. So there is clinical evidence that THC helps and marijuana helps migraines because it is proven anyone on something for 10 years and only that something, it can be looked up. What I'm speaking about is clinical evidence. I have been on nothing but Maranal and cannabis since 2001. It can be looked up, and I'll sign any release for the people that's involved with this so they can see my medical records too and prove this. And it is listed as clinical evidence when someone's been on something 10 years. I have been on Maranal for 10 years for my migraines. My doctor only wants me on the Maranal because THC does stop the pain and I can function. Without it, I have 20, 25 migraines a month. I wouldn't want to do nothing. I wouldn't even want to leave my room. I've had them since I was eight years old. Until 2001, when Dr. Wade wrote that first prescription, there was no help for me. Since then, I've had help. I don't have to be on disability and be a droll in the system. I can still work. I'm a functioning, productive citizen in society. I run a cleaning business where I have to be in charge of people, alarms, everything. I can only do this because I eat my cannabis on a daily basis. It is proven by many people than just me that 75% of what I use daily, I eat. I do not smoke. Don't get me wrong, I do smoke some cannabis, but only 20 to 25% of what I use. When I eat it, I don't have none of my problems. It's in me like a pill, like morphine would be for pain, like Dilaudid would be for some other disease. It's very similar without all the effects though. I can go function and work. I rode the trains down here this morning and took off my time from work, rode a bike from the train up to here. If I can do that and function on marijuana, everything else is a lie about it. I'm living proof of it. Thank you for your time.
Okay, the next speaker we have for migraines is Mr. Richard Paul Zuckerman.
Hi, I'm Richard Paul Zuckerman. I only learned about this hearing this morning, so I wasn't able to collect from my email accounts the articles that have come out supporting the use of marijuana, cannabis for migraine treatment. But naturalnews.com, naturalsociety.com, and norml.org would have access to those studies. So if you contact norml.org in Washington, D.C., please contact them, ask them for the studies on supporting the use of marijuana for migraine. Another one generally, overall, Dr. Mathias Rath, R-A-T-H, the Rath Health Foundation has written articles, one of which is called "The History of the Business with Disease." And Dr. Rath says in this article, and on his website, "The History of the Business with Disease" article, that the pharmaceutical industry has been oppressive towards America and that they've been hostile against naturopathic medicine. Please, cannabis was naturopathic medicine. It's been naturopathic medicine. It was in the U.S. Pharmacopeia early 1900s as a tonic. But now we've come out with studies including the use of migraine. Consider it naturopathic medicine. Please do not be hostile toward naturopathic medicine. The studies are there. Take a look at them, please. Thank you.
The next speaker on migraines is Ms. Susan DeYoung. Please.
My name is Susan DeYoung, and I have had headaches probably since I was 19 years old. Because I've taken many medications for it. My doctor put me on medication, the kind of three-day medication. I can't remember the name of it. And for my headaches, it never would, he would make it so I couldn't work. I felt tired all the time. I thought for many years I did have migraines, and then I was diagnosed, found out I had glaucoma. So I put on medical marijuana, and now it takes care of the pressure in my head. And I can function day to day now, as I couldn't for many years. Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to make a comment on migraines at this point? So we're going to keep the record open until 10:00. So if other people show up, they can make comments, and then we'll go into PTSD at 10 o'clock. Thank you.
If I can take a minute just to let you guys know, this is part of a process. Everyone who filed the petitions early on in July with us, and they were complete, that was one step. The public comment is the second step. We have a hearing, and then there's also the online comment phase. And we have sent the petitions to the University of Arizona to review, to look for other scientific evidence one way or the other. All of the information that's gathered, the petitions, the review from U of A, your comments here today, and your comments online will all be incorporated into a presentation for the department's medical board. So all of the physicians who are a part of the Arizona Department of Health Services will listen to everything and look at everything, and then they'll go through it all and make a recommendation to the director, and then he'll make the final decision. Just so you know what it's part of.
The presentation to the board, is that something that will be publicly available? Or is it just a compilation of every single thing that we gave you guys, or is it sort of tailored to their needs?
It's concise, it's more concise, but it's not, so it's not them sitting and listening to the sections and sections and sections. They do have that available because it's all recorded. But if we have three people who testify about something about PTSD, it won't be everyone's single story. It'll probably talk about how marijuana has helped in cope with PTSD for nightmares. Say, I'm making this up because I don't know, but then say, maybe three people testified to that. And again, the visual and the written comments will all be available for their review. Does that help? And if you want, there are bathrooms and water fountains and snacks.
...
I just wanted to let everyone know that it is about eight minutes until 10 o'clock and we will be beginning the second session for comments on PTSD at 10. Thank you.
Yes.
I'm gonna go ahead and get started with my introduction so we can start taking comments at 10 on the dot. Some of you have already heard this, so I apologize. Good morning, my name is Robert Lane. I'm the Acting Manager of the Office of Administrative Counsel and Rules with the Arizona Department of Health Services. Seated at the tables in the room are Dr. Kara Chris, Don Harrington, and Laura Oxley. We are here to listen to your comments about the possibility of adding to the list of debilitating medical conditions for medical marijuana, post-traumatic stress disorder. I will facilitate this meeting. When you entered the lobby, you should have picked up and completed a speaker slip if you plan to make public comments about the conditions. Please be sure you have completed this, or you may not be called to speak. Each speaker will be limited to two minutes, and you will be prompted when there is one minute remaining, 30 seconds remaining, and when you need to finish. This meeting is a public comment meeting. It will consist of the department's staff listening to your comments and concerns about adding these three medical conditions to the list of debilitating medical conditions. The meeting is not to discuss the possible addition of these three medical conditions, or listen to comments about adding other medical conditions, or changing the rules or regulations for medical marijuana. When giving oral comments, please limit your comments to the medical condition dedicated for the time slot only. Please focus on how the specified medical condition or treatment of the medical condition affects the ability of a person to accomplish activities a day living. What other conventional medical treatments are available to provide relief, and what scientific evidence there is that the use of marijuana will provide relief for the medical condition or treatment of the medical condition. We will listen to PTSD until 11:00 a.m., and then we will move on to depression and listen to depression until noon. Please only address the condition being discussed during that time when you are called. Do not hesitate to express support or opposition to earlier comments, but please try to avoid repetition. We may ask you questions while you're talking to clarify your position. You may also submit written comments today using the computers located in the back room as you exit the state laboratory. Please submit all written comments by 5:00 p.m. today, Tuesday, October 29, 2013. Your input will be considered when deciding whether to add medical conditions to the list of debilitating medical conditions for medical marijuana. And we're now gonna start the comment period for PTSD. If you wish to give oral comment today, please approach the microphone when your name has been called. When you speak, please state your full name, and if applicable, identify the organization you are representing. We will begin the comments about PTSD. And the first speaker we have is Richard Strand, M.D. Please. That one's fine.
Well, there weren't my first 15 seconds. My name is Dr. Richard Strand. I'm a physician practicing here in the valley. My name is Dr. Richard Strand. I'm a physician practicing here in the valley for the past 30 years. I'm a diagnostic radiologist. I served for about 25 years as chief of radiology at Paradise Valley Hospital. But in addition to my radiology background, prior to my residency in radiology, I did one year in adult inpatient psychiatry residency at the McCauley Neuropsychiatric Institute in San Francisco. I served from 1992 to 2000 as the head of the Substance Abuse Education and Testing Committee for USA Track and Field. I am a member of the 2000 USA Olympic Team, and I was in charge of medical care for our athletes for the men's and women's track and field teams. I come here in support of adding PTSD to the list of approved conditions to be treated by medical marijuana. I have with me over on the chair about a dozen articles from the recent literature, all from 2012 or 2013, that support the use of medical marijuana for PTSD. PTSD is a debilitating, difficult, hard-to-treat condition that interferes with people's lives. People are homeless, their marriages break up, they can't get a job, they can't go to school. It's something that really needs good treatment. Currently, the best treatment for PTSD is SSRI antidepressants, but these don't work very well, and they don't work for many people. And further, they only treat one portion of the PTSD disease, which is the anxiety or depression, but they don't address the core cause, which is the lack of the normal ability to extinguish traumatic memories. With PTSD, these kind of traumatic memories can flow back at any time, even years after the original inciting event, and they can be very strong. This is particularly true with our veterans coming back from wars. Almost 40% of combat veterans come back and have PTSD. And there's almost 18 servicemen veterans every single day that are committing suicide. So this is a very significant condition. Medical marijuana has a definite role to play. The recent literature is very positive. I thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you. We now have Gerald DeYoung. Please.
Hello, my name's Gerald DeYoung. I'm a 70s-era war vet. I have PTSD, something fierce. I normally don't get up and speak because I'm shy. This was last minute. I wasn't very well-prepared. But I'm just angry enough to speak about this because I have been down the road with the drugs, with all the medication. I wouldn't be here right now if I didn't stop medicating that particular way. My wife has been with me 35 years. She was there when I was a vet in a hospital. My first one left me because I was so screwed up. I had my head trauma so bad, I had my eye knocked out of the socket, so I've had major brain trauma, brain stem injury, back injury, all of that. And I'm standing here in pretty good shape today. I don't drink, I don't do drugs, I do my marijuana, and that keeps my sanity. My wife and I are still together, and I do work sometimes when I'm physically able, but at least I can get up here and speak. I'm just good damn angry enough to say something. I'm tired of all this crap. It works for some people, doesn't others. I'm not against drugs for those who it works on it, but it didn't work for me, and it doesn't work for a lot of people. So give us a break. There's a lot of guys coming home, and these guys are gonna screw up later, like I did. I came home fine at first. Later, I melted down. That's why my first wife left. My kids are scattered all over the country. But I've been with this one for 35 years because she was there. Her mother was a cook in the vet's home I was in. So she understands me. That's why I'm still married. Most of these guys aren't, for different reasons. So I don't have too much more to say about this, but just give us a break, okay, especially the vets. And it has helped my depression. I won't go into that right now because it's another subject. But anyway, you guys take care, and that's all I have to say for now.
Thank you. Steve Cottrell?
Good morning, my name is Steve Cottrell. I work for a company AZ Med Testing here in the valley. We've been open since 2011. We've been testing the medical marijuana now since 2011 for patients, caregivers, and dispensaries. Reason I'm speaking to you today is of the patients that come in and visit us to get their medicines tested, I would say 25 to 45% of them are patients that have a prescription due to pain. But after a lot of investigations with these people and talking to them, I find out that the reason they really have the prescription is due to PTSD. The stress that they have received over their past has really been quite traumatic, and they find that the marijuana is the only thing that helps them get away and get rid of the stress. They all have ailments that allow them to have these cards, whether it's a plate in their leg, their shoulders have been rebuilt with pins and screws and so forth, so that allows them to have the card. But a majority of them all tell me that the reason that they use this medicine is due to the stress that they've received from the war and other incidences like this. Thank you.
Schmidt?
Hi, my name is Mike Schmidt, and I am a registered nurse for almost 30 years now. And I also happen to be owner of a dispensary in Morana, Arizona. And my background as an RN, I've worked in many different areas, including ER, urgent care. Pretty much ended up in the mental health field, which I enjoyed, and so got very familiar with mental health. And one of my favorite places to work was the Pima County Hospital on the locked unit. And so I'm familiar with PTSD in all of its ugly faces. And particularly the thing that Dr. Strand mentioned too, is it does affect other people, and this gentleman before me, the family members, the communities, and so on. So to make a long story short, I wanted to testify mostly as an advocate of the use of this medicine for PTSD. But then on the dispensary side, I want to have the judges assured that the dispensaries, we actually develop relationships with our vets. They come in on a regular basis, and we have a logbook that helps them monitor the effectiveness of the medications and help guide them in that manner. So for instance, since we are educated by our medical director on different diseases, if a person is anxious, there's certain strains of medicine that you don't want to recommend to them as according to the doctor. So we have relationships with these people, and I hear testimony after testimony of positive changes in their lives. I have one young man from Desert Storm who's lost 60 pounds and gotten off 21 other pills, thanks to this medication, and is actually interacting. And he's just, I think of him today and all the other people that the medicine has helped, just as the man before me said, they use it for the... You know, he got blown up, so he has pain, but what helped him was the emotional component, which there is scientific evidence it does help with extinction, fear extinction. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Robbie Appel?
Good morning, my name's Robbie Appel. At a current veteran's suicide rate of 22 per day, and one per day for active military personnel, the current regime of antidepressant medication being prescribed by the VA such as Paxil or Zoloft has shown to increase suicidal tendencies in its users. Testimony submitted by Dr. William Johnson, a psychiatrist on the medical advisory board for the New Mexico Cannabis Program, has stated that in New Mexico, there has been no noticeable increase in psychiatric hospital admission attributable to the use of cannabis. There is no reason to assume that patients in Arizona would be any different. In regards to self-medication, the issues we've seen, by recommending the addition of PTSD as a qualifying condition to the AMMA, the Department of Health allows PTSD sufferers to obtain high-quality, tested medicine prescribed and monitored under the direction of a recommending physician, dispensary medical director, and knowledgeable, trained dispensary staff, allowing these sufferers and physicians to track the effect various strains and dosages have on these patients, reducing and effectively eliminating the need of self-medication, and focusing on alternative palliative, long-term care solutions. Lastly, maintaining a strong medical foundation and focus for the Arizona Medical Marijuana Program that only utilizes evidence-based research when Dr. Nelson, Chief Medical Officer of the ADHS, has stated that marijuana has not been subjected to high-quality scientifically-controlled testing, represents an insurmountable standard of review that is antithetical to the pursuit and progress of medicine. Anecdotal, circumstantial, and paralytic evidence must be a factor in determining the palliative and therapeutic effect of marijuana, especially considering the federal NIDA and DEA barriers that are placed in front of researchers when attempting to meet the very evidentiary standards that the ADHS set. Hopefully, such comments as today can really help the Department of Health in issuing an opinion that's, you know, different than what they issued in 2012, and finally add PTSD as a qualifying condition to the Arizona Medical Marijuana Act. Thank you.
Thank you. Ken Sobel? Joshua Miller?
Good morning, my name is Josh Miller. I'm a 2013 graduate of the University of Arizona College of Law. My team, the Green Consulting Group, and I, me, Robbie Appel, and our partners, were approached in April about preparing a petition for PTSD and adding it as a qualifying condition. As a law student, the first thing we did is we looked at past proceedings and the past evidence, and the first thing we did is we reviewed the evidentiary package prepared by the College of Public Health and the College of Medicine. The first thing we noticed is the first thing they stated, is one of the first things they stated in their package, is that no study they found directly addresses the question of whether marijuana can effectively treat PTSD. As a law student, I must say that we would call that a packet of non-dispository case law. It does not address the question at hand. When we started researching, we used expansive searches, and we used terms outside of the colleges of public health and the public medicine search terms. For instance, they have cannabis and marijuana, hash are search terms, but they do not have endocannabinoid, cannabinoid, cannabidiol, scientific terms for marijuana, synthetic marijuana compounds that are effective in the treatment of PTSD. We searched, we found peer-reviewed articles, we have articles to submit that have been accepted for publication although not published. Some of these articles come out of New Mexico in observational studies and what's going on in their medical marijuana program. These articles speak to the potential effectiveness of marijuana in treating the symptoms of PTSD. They help with extinction learning, fear extinction, cessation of nightmares, the decrease of stress and anxiety. And all these things are helpful to treat the host of symptoms that PTSD sufferers suffer from. The point that Robbie was making about self-medication is very important. When your options are to list the condition or not list the condition, not listing the condition is what's gonna lead to increased self-medication. If these patients are finding relief, they're gonna continue to seek it out. If these patients are finding relief, they're gonna continue to seek it out. The other option is listing PTSD as a qualifying condition, allowing Arizona Medical Marijuana Program to be the regulated environment in which these patients can seek treatment. For the veterans that suffer PTSD, they develop this condition as they fight abroad for our freedoms, but when they come home, they do not yet have the freedom to choose safe and effective treatment for their condition. We're here today to ask you to grant that freedom. We submit our science and our evidentiary packets. We ask that you look at them, and we ask that you list PTSD as a qualifying condition. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Dyer?
My name's Jim Dyer, and up until April last year, I have been a medical malpractice attorney practicing in Tucson, Arizona for thirty-five years. I have primary progressive multiple sclerosis, which caused me to not be able to practice law anymore. I'm also a medical marijuana patient. I'm also a conservative Republican, if that means anything to anybody. In fact, my mom ran Ronald Reagan's campaign in Arizona in his second election. Anyway, today, Josh just told you a little bit about it. Back in, back in 2012, the problem was that there, there were not peer-reviewed articles submitted basically showing the therapeutic and palliative effect of medical marijuana. Today, it's different. We have submitted peer-reviewed literature that supports the fact that medical cannabis is effective in treating PTSD, and that it has therapeutic and palliative benefits. So, on one side, you have these peer-reviewed articles now. On the other side, you don't have any peer-reviewed articles that say it doesn't help PTSD. And I think when you look at the evidence, you're gonna see that it's really kind of overwhelming that the, at least the published literature that addresses the topic is supportive of, of the palliative and therapeutic effects of marijuana, and it's all, and it's peer-reviewed literature. So, basically, what you didn't have in 2012, you have today, and you can, you know, should approve it as, as one of the listed conditions. As for common sense, you know, I, I, over my life, I've heard about and I've seen people who get drunk and commit suicide. I've heard about and seen people who take OxyContin and either overdose or commit suicide with the drugs, but the one thing I haven't, I just haven't seen is any reporting of somebody using marijuana and then committing suicide. You know, yeah, I got really stoned, and then he shot himself. That doesn't happen. So, I think that, that common sense tells us that marijuana does not cause people to commit suicide, but it can help stop our veterans from committing suicide. Thanks.
Thank you. Heather Manis, RN?
Good morning. I'm Heather Manis, and I'm a registered nurse and the president of the Arizona Cannabis Nurses Association. We're the organization that submitted this petition for PTSD. I'm a psych nurse from New Mexico, where I practiced in home health psych nursing. I worked with patients who had an array of psychiatric issues, including PTSD. I've been witness to the dramatic increase in quality of life that cannabis has offered those, those sufferers of PTSD. I see a need here in Arizona for the patients in Arizona to have the same right to this medication that our veterans and other PTSD sufferers have in New Mexico. It's such a helpful medication, and I was literally able to help patients in a home health setting, coordinating with their physician and me being with them in their home, to help keep them out of, out of hospitals and other, and other facilities to keep them in their homes so that they could be a part of society. What I found, however, was that there were so many pharmaceutical medications that were being used, that one thing we had to do immediately was start to get them off of these medications, specifically opiates. As we, as we started to do that, we would use cannabis because we have a legal program in New Mexico where PTSD is, is a qualifying condition. We were able to get all of the patients off of half of the opiates that they were on, and many of my patients were able to get off of them completely. Once they were on cannabis therapy, they were actually able to live a better quality of life, that they were able to do things that they weren't able to do prior. And one thing that's really important to note here is that self-medication happens when they're not part of a program. And so, here in Arizona, by not allowing those patients to be on a program where they can go into a dispensary like Mike has, and, which is, it's a medical facility, everyone's trained. A patient has to have a referring, a recommending doctor to even get a card, so they would be under that direction. Then they go into a dispensary where there are, where they have a medical director, and they also have the staff that are knowledgeable on, on these medications. So, I would move to say that to decrease and to eliminate self-medication, we must bring these patients on so that they can be under our program where they are limited to two and a half ounces every two weeks, and where they can log their medications and find out which medications are right for them. And I ask you to do this at this time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Leland Fairbanks?
Thank you. I'm Leland Fairbanks, MD, and I've been a family physician fifty-five years and preventive medicine specialist forty-three. I've made a written statement. What I would like to say today is thank you for having the hearing. I reach out to all you patients. I'd like to talk to people who've got some ideas on research. I want to make a point, before you go getting into smoke as medicine, this is the number one cause of cancer these days that's preventable. It's Marlboro cigarettes, Camels, and Chesterfields and all those. And in the military, you know, in World War I, General Pershing said cigarettes are medicine. The soldiers need cigarettes more than food. And he started that culture of cigarettes are medicine. We paid a terrible price for that in the military. I had seven years of my training working in the veterans' hospitals and US Public Health Service, and I had thirty years with the Indian Health Service, and I empathize. People, there's PTSD all over the world. Some countries, everybody has PTSD. If you're shooting rockets into your country and you're all heading for a place to get out of the gunfire, there's a lot of PTSD. We need to work together. Don't just work alone. Get a part of a support group. Get some holistic clinic that thinks of the whole person, continuity of care, veterans. Get involved with your veterans groups, the VFW, the American Legion, and we support you all. Let's, let's work together here, but I don't think smoke is the answer. We gotta figure out some other way, other than smoking ourselves to death. Secondhand smoke kills. And so, find some other way. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Edith Lynn Eddy?
Hello. I'm Edith Lynn Eddy. I have an associate degree in paralegal, I was medical malpractice paralegal for five and a half years. Following that, I went to medical school, to Creutzfeldt College of Osteopathic Medicine. Following that, I went to pediatric residency in San Antonio, Texas, University of Texas, and did my neonatology fellowship at Baylor College of Medicine in Houston, Texas. Following that, I came here, or not here, but here is in Tucson, to be a neonatologist, and I was there until 2011. I decided to retire and have a little bit more quieter life. Bit stressful being a neonatologist, and I went to the Department of Immunobiology and did basic science research for two years. In January of this year, I reconnected with a gentleman I had met in college in the late seventies, and we had fabulous conversations. He lived in Wichita, Kansas, and he had been a highway patrolman from nineteen eighty-two to nineteen ninety-seven. He, and I had lengthy conversations, and one evening I said, you know, I think I have mild PTSD, but it came out as anger, and it was one of the reasons that I retired. And he admitted to me, and only to me, that, you know, I remember those picking up body parts, and I think I may have PTSD as well. He also told me stories about that his very best friend had committed suicide eight months before, when we were talking. On March the thirtieth this year, or March twenty-sixth, excuse me, this year, he put a bullet in his head. He probably was suffering significantly from PTSD, was completely untreated except for what self-care he knew how to do. He still worked for the highway patrol. There was no way that he could have any form of drugs. He couldn't even use tobacco, and plus, he potentially was post-suicidal, which I now am, and that also says that you have, can have symptoms of suicide. My point to this is that I would have dearly loved to have had, or to be able to have given him the opportunity to use medical marijuana in an appropriate and setting where he could, you know, have the dose provided for him, as opposed to other therapies that may or may not have produced the effects needed. I too would love to do research and to facilitate my feeling better to help prevent another suicide, because one suicide is too many. Thank you.
Thank you. Richard Paul Zuckerman?
Hi, good morning. I believe the reason why there aren't many studies on PTSD use with medical marijuana is because in nineteen ninety-seven, the National Institute of Health injected a tumor with THC, and it shrunk the tumor. And the National Institute of Health said, we don't want this coming out. They hid, they hid it. We found out a few years later, and they finally told us, the National Institute of Health told us, we will not fund any more studies on marijuana unless it's likely to show it danger, unless it's likely to show it dangerous. Now, there's plenty of anecdotal evidence supporting the use of cannabis for PTSD. Dr. Lester Grinspoon's book called Marijuana Reconsidered, copyright nineteen seventy-one, has extensive bibliography with studies, one of which concluded that, it was on soldiers, and they concluded that it improves coping behavior. It improved coping behavior in a study from a book from nineteen seventy-one. But I'm, I'm a disabled veteran. They say I'm disabled, and they don't use herbs. The doctor said, we prescribe the drugs like it's candy. Now, they, with this Obamacare, they want to give children more of these, the allopathic pharmaceutical drugs. Listen, please, this is Arizona. You have naturopathic medicine. Please, if there's any state that could allow the use of it, it should be this state. The benefits would out, the benefits would outweigh the risks. The benefits would outweigh the risks. Try it, for a try, even if just a trial period. Give it a try, please.
Thank you. Michael Schmidt? Mike Yulinger?
Hello. My name's Mike. I've lived here all my life. I'm a retired firefighter from Phoenix here. I retired with thirty years on the job, and as far as I believe, I'm the first one to retire with PTSD. It not only affects veterans, it affects, I think, anybody that has anything to do with adrenaline. I'm having a problem right now as we speak. I'm not used to this either, but it's, it's terrible. It'll make a child out of you, and it'll put you down. I started to become agoraphobia. I didn't want to go anywhere. I didn't want to do anything. I became an alcoholic. I was self-medicating. I don't drink anymore. I use marijuana, and I don't have to smoke it. I can eat it. I can put it in brownies, I can put it on a pill. Leave it to me to make that judgment. It's making, I'm alive. There's seven firemen have died in the last year in the valley, not just from Phoenix, in the valley. Mesa Chandler, Scottsdale. They've committed suicide, all ages. They don't know why. I know. I have it. I have PTSD. Leave us alone. Please legalize it. Thank you.
Ron McLeod?
Yes, good morning, everyone. My name is Gerard McLeod. I'm a disabled veteran and have been since nineteen seventy-seven. I just recently located here, three months ago, from New York City, the heart of Al Sharpton County, to Mayor Copa County, in spite of the things that you heard from the sheriff. After listening to the guidelines from the moderator to keep this strictly under the PTSD, I tried and tried to conform my issues regarding the marijuana program under it, but I just can't. So, there's no sense in my trying to pull the wool over someone's eyes who keep John McCain in office. So, anyway, so at this time, I want to withdraw what I have to say, and maybe at a later time, speak to someone who is, who I can address my issues regarding the marijuana program. Thank you.
Thank you. Stacy Theis?
Hi, my name is Stacy Theis. Although I was the original petitioner of migraines and was trying to make it here this morning for that, due to my PTS, I was not able to make it to talk about migraines, because it's something you deal without warning. But I'm here today because I am a Arizona medical marijuana patient, and when this stuff was happening to me this morning, it took as little as a couple hits off of a cannabis cigarette to be able to be here, at least to testify for PTSD. On May twenty-fifth, two thousand and twelve, about a year and a half ago, after hours of evidence and testimonies from doctors, advocates, and most importantly, patients suffering from PTSD, migraines, depression, and anxiety orders, we anxiously awaited the verdict. Most of us very confident that if anything, PTSD would be added as a result to all of our efforts, knowledge, and experiences. In July of two thousand and twelve, Will Humble, Arizona Director of Health, released his decision regarding PTSD. There is simply not enough evidence to prove whether marijuana is medically effective. How much evidence is it gonna take, and why isn't patients' experience as cannabis plant evidence enough? Cannabis provides instant relief for conditions like PTSD, just as the aloe plant provides instant relief for burns, and we didn't need a bunch of data to know that we could use aloe for our burns. There is no way one can wrap their mind around the torturing effects of PTSD that can have on one's body and life unless one's experienced themself. PTSD is said to be a common denominator in suicides most of the time. Living after traumatic experiences can seem impossible, and living while being haunted by these memories of those experiences, not living at all. For our war veterans, PTSD is inevitable. There continues to be thousands and thousands of deaths a year from FDA-approved pharmaceuticals that have undergone double-blinded, peer-reviewed studies, that all these medical professionals hold so much weight for these studies. Meanwhile, without these FDA-approved studies, cannabis still remains casualty-free after three thousand years of use, no deaths, all while it continues to help cancer patients live, children are become seizure-free, keep MS patients out of wheelchairs, improve life of humans all across not only Arizona, but the entire country and world. Cannabis continues to Cannabis continues to bring magic and miraculous healing to people and their lives while FDA-approved pharmaceuticals continue to harm and kill. This is why beautiful stories continue to make news across the map as more and more patients receive access to this powerful plant. It doesn't take much of an IQ to see the obvious common sense making cannabis medicine available to patients suffering PTS. When I stood here just 17 months ago, we were losing on average eight of our soldiers a day to suicide in this country, and I told Will Humble that.
Excuse me, Ms. Theis. I'm sorry to interrupt you, but we're going to have to cut you off so we can make sure that other people get a chance to speak. I apologize.
Okay.
Thank you. Gina Berman, AD, or MD, I'm sorry?
Good morning. My name is Gina Berman. I've been an actively practicing emergency physician in the state of Arizona for the past 12 years. I'm here to support the addition of PTSD as a qualifying condition to the Arizona Medical Marijuana Program. There are currently two medications approved for the treatment of PTSD by the FDA, sertraline and paroxetine. These drugs have been studied extensively and each has a black box warning related to concerns over increased depression and risk for suicide. Particularly vulnerable are those patients under the age of 25 and over the age of 65. Further, studies suggest that although approved, sertraline leads to only modest improvements in PTSD symptoms and sertraline is not effective for veterans with combat-related PTSD. Maybe this is part of the reason there are so many suicides in our veteran population. Paxil, the other FDA-approved drug, is notorious for its intolerable withdrawal profile and also has a risk treatment, risk of treatment-induced suicide. A jury has awarded a $6.4 million reward against the maker of Paxil, GlaxoSmithKline, to a family that suffered a multiple homicide and then suicide because it was deemed that Paxil was a causative factor. All other medications to treat PTSD are off-label. The VA does have a different frontline treatment plan for PTSD, which is sertraline and venlafaxine. Like SSRIs, venlafaxine has been shown to have a statistically significant increase in suicidal behavior after treatment commencement. Venlafaxine also has a greater toxicity than other SSRIs, which is dangerous when increased suicidal behavior is a concern. Studies of VA prescribing patterns have shown that PTSD is grossly mishandled with inappropriate medications being prescribed as frontline agents and/or inappropriate off-label medications such as benzodiazepines being mixed with SSRIs. I understand that I'm here to support cannabis as a qualifying condition and not to criticize SSRIs, which to their credit have been the only responsible, uh, treatment of this condition to date. However, it is important to understand where PTSD patients are coming from, the challenges they currently face, and how desperate they and their families are for other options. The subjective and experiential data of cannabis used by veterans in particular is well-known. What we are coming to understand is that our war heroes and fellow citizens who continue to suffer from past trauma are self-medicating with cannabis for a reason. The endocannabinoid system is well-described and it is well-known that the CB1 cannabinoid receptors are densely represented in the brain. It has been noted that the CB1 receptor is the most common G-type protein receptor in the brain. Endocannabinoids are known to participate in memory consolidation, memory retrieval, and memory extinction. These are important in the framework of PTSD because these symptoms appear to be maladaptive in persons suffering from PTSD, meaning that when the traumatic event or events occurred, the brain's means of processing and storing that information is maladaptive and those memories are recalled with frequency and severity of remembrance, such that the person cannot escape that memory or event. The sequelae of living with incessant and vibrant recollections of a traumatic event are devastating. The presence of the endocannabinoid signaling systems within the hypothalamus and amygdala point to the significance of this system for the regulation of neuroendocrine and behavioral responses to stress. Importantly, those are fear extinction, antidepressive, and anxiolytic effects. The functional neurochemistry of the brain is clear. The behavior of endogenous endocannabinoids ligands is clear. What we are continuing to learn more and more about is the effect of exogenous cannabinoids in the system. The research we have so far is compelling and intriguing. More research in this area would help bridge the gap between the known active anticonvernoids
Ms. Berman, I'm sorry, I'm going to have to cut you off. And the experiential testimony of PTSD sufferers. Thank you. And anybody that wants more, to submit more information can do so online and we have comment boxes outside. I apologize if I mispronounce your last name. Rich Villalobos?
I'm here just to show support for PTSD. I'm a patient also. Uh, I suffer from multiple sclerosis. Uh, I am a patient of the medical marijuana program. I am here today to show you that it does work and I think enough is enough. If you know how to work a computer, I'm sure you can Google it. You don't need all of us to sit here and tell you and show you all the evidence. Stop wasting our time and stop arresting patients. And please take all these people's, uh, voices and concerns into consideration and don't think about yourself. Put yourself in their shoes or think about one of your family members dealing with this and, you know, support them because you'll never know, they might be next. Thank you.
Kent Sobel? Thank you.
Hi, my name's Leslie Engelking. I'm the executive director for Bloom dispensaries. Um, I wasn't planning on speaking today. I actually just got up here because I felt like I had a little something to add. Um, my history before being the executive director for Bloom was as a pharmaceutical rep and I actually worked for the company who launched Prozac back in the day. So, um, I know a little bit about depression and PTSD and have had some experience with all the medications, not personally thankfully, but, um, that are used to treat PTSD. And I do know, um, how they are lacking and about the side effects that Dr. Berman talked about and that sort of thing. So, um, it's interesting to come from that background and now be working in the field of medical marijuana. I have seen the effects of medical marijuana on patients with PTSD and they are tremendous. I think everything we've heard today, it's clear, treatment is lacking for these patients and they need help. And it's also clear that we don't necessarily have studies perhaps that somebody wants. I mean, there's a lot of good data out there, but maybe they're not great, you know, clinical trials that have been through the FDA and I think that's just simply because it hasn't been legal. We haven't even been allowed to do these trials and that's really what we need. But either way, patients are committing suicide, they are desperate for help, and they need to be allowed to get that help. And I don't think it should be, you know, prevented from them having it and certainly, I mean, these human beings need to be able to live their lives. They've given their lives for us, so.
Thanks.
Thank you. Kent Sobel?
Yeah, thank you. My name is Ken Sobel. I'm on the board for the Arizona Dispensary Association and I've been involved in helping to develop the Arizona Medical Marijuana Act from the perspective of dispensaries. Um, we brought together a group of talented people, informed people, to make presentations today and would have enjoyed an opportunity to have a more full expression of our opinions on this matter. First, the Arizona Cannabis Nurses Association with Nurse Heather. Second, the Green Consulting Group with some talented young lawyers who were trained at the University of Arizona. I myself, my roots go back to the University of Arizona where I was student body president back in the seventies and started Spring Fling and have been connected to the state as I returned here to take care of my father who died from cancer and found again that the effects of cannabis treatment were profound and much better than conventional medicine in dealing with that. We operate under a system of rules and that's what we intend to do as far as our petition goes to add PTSD. We started a Facebook page adding PTSD to AMA and we had hundreds of people participate in that. We have reached out to the entire, uh, community of veterans. Why we ask, with five states that have approved PTSD, most especially our neighbor, New Mexico, should a returning war hero? Thirty percent of our war heroes are returning from conflict with PTSD. Why should those folks who happen to land in Albuquerque, New Mexico, be treated with the dignity and respect that they deserve? When that same person or someone similar arrives at Sky Harbor Airport and can't get the same medicine? We've established all of the principles that are incorporated into this rule. We've heard the testimony of people who've reviewed the scientific evidence, distinguished doctors, many others who would have participated if they were allowed the courtesy of Skyping because they had patients they had to see. But we have provided the testimony, shows that the compelling scientific evidence shows that there's at least a palliative effect and benefit from, from medical cannabis and PTSD. We've proven that. There is no study out there that shows the opposite of that. We have a regulated, a regulated system now and I'm, just the changed circumstances, if you permit me a little additional time, let me focus on the changed circumstances that have occurred generally with respect to medical cannabis in Arizona and PTSD. First of all, you now have 80 dispensaries almost that are open now, that are providing services with dispensary owners who have medical directors on staff so that a patient who gets recommended for PTSD then has the additional follow-up in the dispensary with a medical director, with trained personnel, with people to help follow and monitor his care, using a book like Mike brought up that shows how they document their treatment, much better than self-medication. Since the last time you considered the issue, we have new reports that show the suicide rates of veterans at epidemic proportions.
Excuse me, Mr. Sobel. I'm sorry, I'm going to, I'm going to ask you, I'm going to cut you off and we're going to, because a lot of people were cut off. We do have some more time, but we want to make sure that everybody that, um, was cut off or if anybody else wants to make additional comments, we give that opportunity, so.
My only request is because we have an organized group.
Or if the room is fine with you continuing, I just want to make sure everybody has a fair opportunity. Okay.
So.
Go on.
And the reason I point out these changed circumstances is because while I believe that the committee and probably in doing their due diligence tried to make a fair effort at it, you know, a year and a half ago, I think even then the decision probably should have been different and we hope that the decision is different this time around. So the changed circumstances that I'm describing to you or to them, um, is basically to reconsider and take a new look at this particular issue. We obviously have had the situation occur where two states have now legalized it for adult use and that goes to the effect that medical cannabis is safe. Zero or near zero toxicity. And there's a weighing or balancing that you can see in this rule that, that tells us, it teaches us in here that we're comparing medical cannabis treatment to conventional medicine. And we have a doctor who stands up, actually several of them, who are telling you that the primary drugs off-label that they're using for vets in comparison to placebos has an elevated risk of not only behavior but ideation towards suicide. Those are bad drugs. That's what they're getting. There's changed circumstances from the VA itself, from the same federal government that makes it illegal. The VA has now changed their policy. Whereas before, doctors were going to take their patients, their VA, veteran patients off their other medications if they self-disclose their cannabis use. Now, the VA has a changed policy and allows them to continue to treat those patients. We're dealing in an environment where a patent that was issued by our US government, that was obtained by them, shows the medical value for autoimmune disease and for anti-inflammation, antioxidant. We know that. These are all these changed circumstances. Let me get to the final point. If, if we just look at New Mexico, that state not only was, used PTSD as the first debilitating condition they added to the, the protocol or the list, but they also just reaffirmed it. So initially, they added PTSD with seven doctors on a review board who found, using the same standards as we would have in any scientific community and in Arizona, the benefit of cannabis for PTSD and just a few months ago reaffirmed it with seven doctors, including a psychiatrist whose report will be submitted and you will receive. Seven doctors saying that this medicine, cannabis medicine, is so valuable for PTSD, we must keep it. Where 40% of their entire patient population in a highly regulated medical environment, just like we have here in Arizona, 40% of their patients, and in four years of actual use, not one single reported adverse effect. We're here on behalf of, there are many victims and, and again, they also found, I believe it was a 70, the newest study they've done over there, 75% improvement in CAP system scores. Second, we don't want to leave out other victims of crime or our firefighters or our police officers or highway patrol members. It's not just veterans, but by God, our veterans deserve the opportunity to have this medication available to deal with the harmful effects of what we did in putting them in harm's way to receive that condition. So again, on behalf of the Arizona Cannabis Nurses Association, Green Consulting Group, and all the people who've testified, and God bless you, Dr. Leland, but Nurse Heather actually started the first infusion kitchen in Arizona. And so this medicine's available not, with smokeless alternatives, including edibles that are very good. So we, we can also provide that, even though some studies show that sm, light or moderate smoking of cannabis actually is helpful. Thank you again for listening and I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Does anybody else want to add any comments?
I'd like to add, uh, I'm Dr. Richard Strand. Uh, I would like to add a brief comment, uh, only in the fact that we've talked an awful lot about, uh, victims of, uh, trauma that's occurred in war. Uh, this is a really probably the most serious, most toxic sort of stress that people have, but not to forget the kinds of stress that we have right here in, in the States. The loss of a loved one, a bad car accident, um, debilitating disease or cancer. Uh, and it doesn't really make too much difference if it happens to you or a loved one. Uh, anyone can, uh, suffer with post-traumatic stress syndrome. And in fact, one thing that we have not talked about and I would like to put into the record is that the actual majority of PTSD sufferers in America are women. Not men, not veterans, but women that may have been sexually abused, uh, that have had other significant trauma, rape, um, accidents. So I don't want to forget our better halves, um, not to, uh, mean that the veterans aren't really first in our minds because they're great service to our country. Thank you.
Anybody else that was cut off want to say something or, if you would like to?
I'll finish reading. Um, this is where I was cut off. "It doesn't take much of an IQ to see the obvious common sense making cannabis medicine available to patients suffer, suffering PTS would be. When I stood here just 17 months ago, we were losing on average of eight of our soldiers a day to suicide in this country. Today, that average has spiked to 22 a day. We will lose at least three of our soldiers while we are in this hearing today. For every one soldier that dies in combat, 25 kill themselves. Since 2010, Will Humble has been a part of this medical program with us, meeting patients, learning more about this plant. Will Humble was even at the Patients Out of Time Conference in 2012 in Tucson. And at that time, I was very proud of him and seeing the staff there with him. I know that everyone here is not ignorant to not only the safety of this plant, but also the amazing medical value this plant holds. What's the need to wait on anything else when we have thousands and thousands of patient stories and research publications from across the world showing not only the medical wonders of this cannabis plant, but also its extreme benefits for PTS sufferers and their safety? I plead with you to understand..." Oh, I'm sorry. Um, I plead with, um, you to understand the lack of credibility that the clinical trials and the, and the studies that we hold so much weight really do in regards to public safety. This time around, I ask that Will Humble please be human first, American second, and an employee of the state of Arizona last when considering adding PTSD to the qualifying list. Please make the right, healthier decisions for the people of Arizona and our soldiers here. Let's be part of the solution in bringing our high suicide rates down while improving the quality of the lives of our soldiers and their families. Our PTS patients deserve a safer, more effective opinion, option for their health. As you can see in the increased statistics just over the past 17 months, there is no time to wait for anything when considering compassion and having the courage to make right decisions for our patients here. Thank you and I hope that the right choice for our PTS patients and all our Arizona patients are made very, very soon. There's no time to waste."
Thank you. If nobody else has any comments, it looks like we will start, um, depression in about five minutes.[1776.67] minutes.
Yes, hi. Arizona Cannabis Nurses Association, in conjunction with the Green Consulting Group, put together this petition and committed it back in July. Yes, and, and if they don't, we feel that we could have pieced together in such a way that we can actually take the report, because we, we have to pardon everything. We, we've given them everything that they really asked for, and if they deny us, then there's some other reason, because legally, we've done everything that we could do to, to prove that this should be added. New Mexico, I come from New Mexico, I'm a nurse from New Mexico, and I treated many patients, I worked with many cannabis patients, veterans, sex, sex abuse victims, and we've seen that this medication is still very helpful and it's better. Well, for instance, they're, they're able to not have to take other medications, which, when, when they're on other pharmaceuticals, sometimes they become homebound, and, and they're unable to ride, or they, they get afraid to leave their home. With cannabis, it seems to take care of those things, and so they're able to go out and have lunch with their friends, or just be in society in a much better way, just like the gentleman we saw here, that literally had an anxiety attack just from, just from having to speak in front of people, he had to leave and he was very upset because of his speech and his speech. These are the kinds of things that you see with people in social situations, and when they're medicated with cannabis, those fear-based things that they're experiencing really seem to mellow, and they're able to just be in society as, as normal as normal is. You know, it's a fifty-fifty chance. They're, they're gonna say yes, or they're gonna say no, and then we will make our next step depending on what side it is to the better. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, how you doing?
Good. What's up?
Thanks, I cut the second half.
Thank you for having us here. We've been able to work it out for...
Okay. Thanks for the comments. Yeah, do you wanna go somewhere more quiet?
What do you think of this proposal here today? How did it reach cancer? What do you, what do you think?
Well, this is really an ongoing process, starting, we started in about July, where we put out the request for petitions to add debilitating medical conditions. This hearing today is part of that process where we gather information from the public. We have an online forum where we get information, and then we also get a literature review from U of A College of Public Health, where we'll do some additional analysis. At that point, we bring together my agency's medical committee, so it's about eight to ten physicians that work here for the Department of Health Services, and they will review all of that evidence, and then provide me with some analysis and a recommendation for each of the medical conditions that we're talking about today at the hearing. So, you know, I can't really say at this point whether we're gonna add or not add anything, but what I can speak to is the process that we use, ultimately, that will land on my desk, and at that point, I'll make a decision on using these debilitating medical conditions. But no matter what happens, you know, the way we set up the regulations for the Arizona Medical Marijuana Act, you know, there are additional opportunities to add new petitions twice a year. So, this is the second set of hearings, we had some hearings back in 2012, these are hearings sort of in late 2013, we probably will have two hearings in 2014, and 2013, and 2016, and we thought that was an important thing to build into the regulations because of the body of medical...
Hi, thank you all for being here, we're gonna get started with the final hearing in just a couple of minutes. Thank you.
Yeah, that's all my schedule.
I think we're gonna go ahead and get started on depression. A lot of you have seen this already, but I have to go through it, so, good morning. My name is Robert Lane, I'm the acting manager of the Office of Administrative Council and Rules with the Department of Health Services. Seated at the tables behind me are Dr. Cara Chris and Don Harrington. We are here to listen to your comments about the possibility of adding to the list of debilitating medical conditions for medical marijuana, depression. I will facilitate this meeting. When you enter the lobby area, you should have picked up and completed a speaker slip if you plan to make public comments about the conditions. Please be sure you have completed this, or you may not be called to speak. Each speaker will be limited to two minutes. You will be prompted when there is one minute remaining, thirty seconds remaining, and when you need to finish. This meeting is a public, or, a public comment meeting, it will consist of the department's staff listening to your comments and concerns about adding these three medical conditions to the list of debilitating medical conditions. The meeting is not to discuss a possible addition of these three medical conditions, or listen to comments about adding other medical conditions, or changing the rules or regulations for medical marijuana. When giving oral comments, please limit your comments to the medical condition dedicated for the time slot only. Please focus on how the specified medical condition or treatment of med, of the medical condition affects the ability of a person to accomplish activities of daily living, what other con, conventional medical treatments are available to provide relief, and what scientific evidence there is that the use of marijuana will provide relief for the medical condition or treatment of the medical condition. We will listen to comments about depression until noon. Please only address the condition being discussed during that time when you are called. Do not hesitate to express support or opposition to earlier comments, but please try to avoid repetition. We may ask you questions while you are talking to clarify your position. You may also submit written comments today, using the computers located in the back room as you exit, as you exit the state laboratory. Please submit all written comments by 5:00 PM today, Tuesday, October 29th, 2013. Your input will be considered when deciding whether to add medical conditions to the list of debilitating medical conditions for medical marijuana. If you wish to give a oral, oral comment today, please approach the microphone when your name has been called. When you speak, please state your full name, and if applicable, identify the organization you are representing. We will begin with comments about depression. As of right now, we have one comment slip for Richard Paul Zuckerman, and I do not believe Mr. Zuckerman is still here. We don't have any comments at this time, but we will leave, or we will leave the comment period open till noon, so if somebody comes in, we'll let you know. Ms. Stacy Theis, or Theis, please, did you have a comment?
Okay. My name is Stacy Theis. I'm gonna talk again about depression, getting it added to the qualifying conditions list, along with PTSD and migraines. In 2010, after we passed medical marijuana, it encouraged me to go to Oak Street University in 2011, learned all this stuff, came back, researched, you know, just like Ricky said, everything you could find on Google, researched everything, and just with the tools of the knowledge that's out there, started being a patient advocate and going to patients that people are reaching out to me to talk to, that were suffering from pharmaceuticals and their current treatments, and people started reaching out to me to go talk to them about this medicine. And because of our medical marijuana program, I was able to go educate patients, help get people their medical cards, and literally, sometimes in the matter of just a few days, patients experiencing just crazy miraculous event, you know, events in their lives, and healing because of cannabis, and because of our medical program. There are so many patients out there suffering over and over again from all these pharmaceuticals that are out there, that do, do ruin people's lives, they keep them in homes, they keep them away from being able to be moms, dads, employers, and I'm just here asking, begging, that we embrace our medical marijuana program as a gift in this state for the pe, patients of Arizona, and please, please reconsider and take these things in consideration a lot better than we did at our last hearing, and get as many, many qual, conditions added to that list as we can consciously add to that list for the patients of Arizona, especially these mental disabilities like PTSD and depression. And migraines, when you suffer from migraines, trust me, PTSD, depression, anxiety, it all comes with it all, so just please, every, I mean, the truth is, we, cannabis is miracle medicine, and any condition that has any evidence out there that this helps should be added to the qualifying conditions list for our patients in Arizona.
Thank you.
Thanks again. I'm back up here, I can say that on this topic, I do suffer from depression due to my multiple sclerosis. It is a very up and down situation, and being a cannabis user, tremendously, it has helped me out, and have not had to resort to a pharmaceutical drug, which is known in, to everybody, that it does cause, you know, suicidal thoughts and tendencies, and then eventually the person will kill themselves. So I gotta say that with me and doing our advocating with my friend Stacy, we have helped a lot of people not go that route and go more of a natural route, so please stop looking at us as a piggy bank and push, pushing us to take these pharmaceutical drugs that are not helping us, they're more killing us.
We don't have any further comments at this point, but like I've stated, we will be here till noon, so if more comments come in, I will let you know. Thank you.
It looks like this.
I don't believe in that alone.
Okay, we actually have one comment that just came in for depression. Mr. Alex Romero?
Thank you. My name is Alex Romero. I am on the Board of Directors of DroGwatch International and Arizona is concerned about smoking. DroGwatch International has been monitoring the movement of the pro-legalization lobby for over 30 years. And I want to first qualify what I'm going to say, that I have sick and dying members in my family. A son of Vietnam veteran died about four years ago that had 18 tumors in his brain as a result of being exposed to Agent Orange in Vietnam. And I have two daughters that are sick and dying from various ailments. So I'm very sympathetic to people who are sick and dying and have different ailments. So I'm not opposed to care and better improvement of their lives. I certainly am for that. I want better health for my children, my own children and grandchildren. However, what I want to speak about is that the public and many, even some of the people that have spoken, not all of them, because I've spoken to some of them, are unaware that the medical marijuana issue is part of a red herring strategy of the pro-legalization lobby. In 1992, they met in San Francisco and I turned in information, a DVD and written testimony. They met in 1992 in San Francisco and essentially developed a plan to legalize all illicit drugs. Now, the operative words here are illicit drugs. And they said, "We will use medical marijuana as the red herring to get our foot in the door." They have won, they got it. Then they said, "We will go to recreational marijuana." They won, they have it, Washington, Colorado. They have initiative signature gathering out on the streets today and they're going to get it here in Arizona. And surveys show that they will probably get it on the ballot and that they will win. Surveys show that the public wants it. But nevertheless, the issue of it being a red herring by the pro-legalization lobby is very important. I heard many testimonies today, many of it anecdotal. As I was speaking to one gentleman earlier, "I want to see the research. Show me the research." Anecdotal's are great. I have a million of them myself, but unless I see scientific evidence, and by the way, Israel has done all the work for these ladies and gentlemen. Israel has done the work. They have found a way to use the THC in the marijuana without getting high. And that research has been done. Bring that to America, get the peer review necessary, and you'll have what you want, but not the way they're doing it now. Use it in the manner that they're doing as part of the strategy to legalize all of its drugs. So...
Excuse me, Mr. Romero?
Yes.
I hate to interrupt you, but we need to keep the focus on depression in this time period.
All right. Depression, thank you. Depression is one aspect where it's being used. It's being touted, it's that. And again, I understand that the crude marijuana, whether it's smoked or eaten, does bring relief, but I'm going back to the manner it's being used and against federal laws. And that's all I have to say and I thank you for your attention.
At this time, we don't have any further comments, but we're going to be here till noon, so if more comments come in, we'll let you know. Thank you.
Well, I certainly hope and I guess I would have now, but I appreciate you treating everybody with kindness and people disagree with me and think them understand kindness as a group thing and that's a way to do it. But I would like to look into, I've talked to some people about getting some of those research components within the draft plan and commit to it and do that kind of research instead of the kind that just deals with the smoke and we already know about smoke. And the other thing is I think if you want to put a good use to any of your fun, I think the schools, you know, pet off the air program and that we need it and a good program in school for drug education and the new style of N O A C, they're trying, you got somebody to promote that. If you hope, you know, the help of everybody in the state, you can somehow use some of the money that you got to promote getting those drug education programs back in the school, getting all these kids, instead of learning, you're giving something better to them. So I think it can all work together and if somebody says, "I'm throwing it off," they may be right, but we still have to...
We always do the best we can. Thank you. Good to see you.
And...
You ready? You gonna leave?
Yeah.
I call you. Okay. And so she may actually come down.
Yeah.
Because I didn't know if you were still there. And I'm like, oh, that's a good thing.
Yeah.
Yeah. He's turning it off the record, isn't he? Okay. Yeah. So... No, I have to, I'm hoping something that you all know. And you laugh. And you... Oh. This is... No idea. Is it any credit? And that's the motivation. It shows what we have to do on the national level. What is... Wow, what can it be? Oh, my gosh. Yeah. My favorite. Oh. We used to do that when it was definitely before. So thanks for your skill. Good to see you again. Okay. And definitely, okay, wonderful. Yes. So that's the question. Yeah. You ready? You're gonna go, right?
Yeah.
Do you want to close?
Yeah.
Do you want to close?
No.
No, no, no.
Oh.
No, no, no.
Okay.
Let's do it. We give our quote, for the... God's word. Okay, let's do it without a quote. Okay. You don't have names, they... I know, you just, you have three paragraphs.
Yeah.
Or you could say war on... She doesn't have space really. God's trying to... Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Yeah. You're going to go, right?
Yeah.
Do you want to close?
Yeah.
Do you want to close?
From you?
No.
Oh.
No, no, no. Okay. Let's do it. Um, let's do. He's got a quote. Is it? God said. The prophet.
No, I think it's.
Okay, let's do it without a quote. Okay. You don't have names. I know, you just, you have three paragraphs.
Yeah.
Or you could say war. She doesn't have space really. God's trying to.
Thank you.
Yeah. So. We've seen you though when it was definitely before. So thanks for your skill. Good to see you again. Okay. And definitely. Wonderful. The. Yes. So that's the question. Yeah. You ready? You're going to go, right?
Yeah.
Do you want to close?
Yeah.
Do you want to close?
From you?
No.
Oh.
No, no, no. Okay. Let's do it. Um, let's do. He's got a quote. Is it? God said. The prophet.
No, I think it's.
Okay, let's do it without a quote. Okay. You don't have names. I know, you just, you have three paragraphs.
Yeah.
Or you could say war. She doesn't have space really. God's trying to.
Thank you.
Yeah. So. We've seen you though when it was definitely before. So thanks for your skill. Good to see you again. Okay. And definitely. Wonderful. The. Yes. So that's the question. Yeah. You ready? You're going to go, right?
Yeah.
Do you want to close?
Yeah.
Do you want to close?
From you?
No.
Oh.
No, no, no. Okay. Let's do it. Um, let's do. He's got a quote. Is it? God said. The prophet.
No, I think it's.
Okay, let's do it without a quote. Okay. You don't have names. I know, you just, you have three paragraphs.
Yeah.
Or you could say war. She doesn't have space really. God's trying to.
Thank you.
Yeah. So. We've seen you though when it was definitely before. So thanks for your skill. Good to see you again. Okay. And definitely. Wonderful. The. Yes. So that's the question. Yeah. You ready? You're going to go, right?
Yeah.
Do you want to close?
Yeah.
Do you want to close?
From you?
No.
Oh.
No, no, no. Okay. Let's do it. Um, let's do. He's got a quote. Is it? God said. The prophet.
No, I think it's.
Okay, let's do it without a quote. Okay. You don't have names. I know, you just, you have three paragraphs.
Yeah.
Or you could say war. She doesn't have space really. God's trying to.
Thank you.
Yeah. So. We've seen you though when it was definitely before. So thanks for your skill. Good to see you again. Okay. And definitely. Wonderful. The. Yes. So that's the question. Yeah. You ready? You're going to go, right?
Yeah.
Do you want to close?
Yeah.
Do you want to close?
From you?
No.
Oh.
No, no, no. Okay. Let's do it. Um, let's do. He's got a quote. Is it? God said. The prophet.
No, I think it's.
Okay, let's do it without a quote. Okay. You don't have names. I know, you just, you have three paragraphs.
Yeah.
Or you could say war. She doesn't have space really. God's trying to.
Thank you.
Yeah. So. We've seen you though when it was definitely before. So thanks for your skill. Good to see you again. Okay. And definitely. Wonderful. The. Yes. So that's the question. Yeah. You ready? You're going to go, right?
Yeah.
Do you want to close?
Yeah.
Do you want to close?
From you?
No.
Oh.
No, no, no. Okay. Let's do it. Um, let's do. He's got a quote. Is it? God said. The prophet.
No, I think it's.
Okay, let's do it without a quote. Okay. You don't have names. I know, you just, you have three paragraphs.
Yeah.
Or you could say war. She doesn't have space really. God's trying to.
Thank you.
Yeah. So. We've seen you though when it was definitely before. So thanks for your skill. Good to see you again. Okay. And definitely. Wonderful. The. Yes. So that's the question. Yeah. You ready? You're going to go, right?
Yeah.
Do you want to close?
Yeah.
Do you want to close?
From you?
No.
Oh.
No, no, no. Okay. Let's do it. Um, let's do. He's got a quote. Is it? God said. The prophet.
No, I think it's.
Okay, let's do it without a quote. Okay. You don't have names. I know, you just, you have three paragraphs.
Yeah.
Or you could say war. She doesn't have space really. God's trying to.
Thank you.
Yeah. So. We've seen you though when it was definitely before. So thanks for your skill. Good to see you again. Okay. And definitely. Wonderful. The. Yes. So that's the question. Yeah. You ready? You're going to go, right?
Yeah.
Do you want to close?
Yeah.
Do you want to close?
From you?
No.
Oh.
No, no, no. Okay. Let's do it. Um, let's do. He's got a quote. Is it? God said. The prophet.
No, I think it's.
Okay, let's do it without a quote. Okay. You don't have names. I know, you just, you have three paragraphs.
Yeah.
Or you could say war. She doesn't have space really. God's trying to.
Thank you.
Yeah. So. We've seen you though when it was definitely before. So thanks for your skill. Good to see you again. Okay. And definitely. Wonderful. The. Yes. So that's the question. Yeah. You ready? You're going to go, right?
Yeah.
Do you want to close?
Yeah.
Do you want to close?
From you?
No.
Oh.
No, no, no. Okay. Let's do it. Um, let's do. He's got a quote. Is it? God said. The prophet.
No, I think it's.
Okay, let's do it without a quote. Okay. You don't have names. I know, you just, you have three paragraphs.
Yeah.
Or you could say war. She doesn't have space really. God's trying to.
Thank you.
Yeah. So. We've seen you though when it was definitely before. So thanks for your skill. Good to see you again. Okay. And definitely. Wonderful. The. Yes. So that's the question. Yeah. You ready? You're going to go, right?
Yeah.
Do you want to close?
Yeah.
Do you want to close?
From you?
No.
Oh.
No, no, no. Okay. Let's do it. Um, let's do. He's got a quote. Is it? God said. The prophet.
No, I think it's.
Okay, let's do it without a quote. Okay. You don't have names. I know, you just, you have three paragraphs.
Yeah.
Or you could say war. She doesn't have space really. God's trying to.
Thank you.
Yeah. So. We've seen you though when it was definitely before. So thanks for your skill. Good to see you again. Okay. And definitely. Wonderful. The. Yes. So that's the question. Yeah. You ready? You're going to go, right?
Yeah.
Do you want to close?
Yeah.
Do you want to close?
From you?
No.
Oh.
No, no, no. Okay. Let's do it. Um, let's do. He's got a quote. Is it? God said. The prophet.
No, I think it's.
Okay, let's do it without a quote. Okay. You don't have names. I know, you just, you have three paragraphs.
Yeah.
Or you could say war. She doesn't have space really. God's trying to.
Thank you.
Yeah. So. We've seen you though when it was definitely before. So thanks for your skill. Good to see you again. Okay. And definitely. Wonderful. The. Yes. So that's the question. Yeah. You ready? You're going to go, right?
Yeah.
Do you want to close?
Yeah.
Do you want to close?
From you?
No.
Oh.
No, no, no. Okay. Let's do it. Um, let's do. He's got a quote. Is it? God said. The prophet.
No, I think it's.
Okay, let's do it without a quote. Okay. You don't have names. I know, you just, you have three paragraphs.
Yeah.
Or you could say war. She doesn't have space really. God's trying to.
Thank you.
Yeah. So. We've seen you though when it was definitely before. So thanks for your skill. Good to see you again. Okay. And definitely. Wonderful. The. Yes. So that's the question. Yeah. You ready? You're going to go, right?
Yeah.
Do you want to close?
Yeah.
Do you want to close?
From you?
No.
Oh.
No, no, no. Okay. Let's do it. Um, let's do. He's got a quote. Is it? God said. The prophet.
No, I think it's.
Okay, let's do it without a quote. Okay. You don't have names. I know, you just, you have three paragraphs.
Yeah.
Or you could say war. She doesn't have space really. God's trying to.
Thank you.
Yeah. So. We've seen you though when it was definitely before. So thanks for your skill. Good to see you again. Okay. And definitely. Wonderful. The. Yes. So that's the question. Yeah. You ready? You're going to go, right?
Yeah.
Do you want to close?
Yeah.
Do you want to close?
From you?
No.
Oh.
No, no, no. Okay. Let's do it. Um, let's do. He's got a quote. Is it? God said. The prophet.
No, I think it's.
Okay, let's do it without a quote. Okay. You don't have names. I know, you just, you have three paragraphs.
Yeah.
Or you could say war. She doesn't have space really. God's trying to.
Thank you.
Yeah. So. We've seen you though when it was definitely before. So thanks for your skill. Good to see you again. Okay.[988.43]
You ready? You're gonna go right?
Yeah.
Do you want a quote?
Yeah.
Do you want a quote?
From you?
No.
Oh.
No, no, no.
Okay, that's a good quote.
Uh, let's do it.
We'll give her a quote.
Here's one.
God's character is sad.
No, I think it's better.
The process is...
It's medical, right?
If I was to...
Okay, let's do it without a quote.
Okay.
You don't have any space on your...
I know, you just, you have three paragraphs.
Yeah.
Or you could say more.
Yes.
Yes.
So this is gonna be recorded and reviewed later?
Um, so, we're still live streaming. So people can watch it. Um, we've had different people come in and testify.
Correct.
And then the medical committee will listen to, has the opportunity to review all of it, and review all the scientific literature and everything that they put in. And then they'll sit and talk about it.
Okay.
And then they'll make recommendations to the director.
Oh, okay.
And he'll make a decision in January.
Okay.
He was here for a little while.
Okay.
Hi, everyone, we...
Hi, everyone, we have one more comment on depression. Uh, Mr. Alan Corbett.
Thank you. There you go. Excuse me, I literally ran to get here. Uh... Depression isn't fun. Uh... I got depressed recently. I found out, uh... I don't know if you know, uh, we've been lied to our whole lives. You know, these crazy people talk about 9/11 being an inside job. Three buildings fell that day. Turns out our government's been lying to us for a long time, so I got very depressed. 'Cause all my friends... Our government would blow up the Twin Towers. That's stupid. You know, I'm like, but I know all the facts. And I got very depressed. I keep screaming, you know, GMOs, they're poisoning our food. Fluoride has nothing to do with your teeth. And boy, did I sink into a hole. I gained a hundred pounds. Very depressed. I mean, nobody, who wants to believe that? That's crazy. That's saying society is a lie? It is, folks. Boy, does Mary Jane help. Because I, 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 I would've just lost it. I mean, to be, last year this time, I was the nut job. This year, the people are waking up. People are waking up to the fact that, psh, everything we know is a lie. Our government does think power is more important than us. In fact, recently, they spent, I think it was $85 million on the police force to shut down the government. Meanwhile, they had to cut food stamps by $53 million? That directly says, police are more important than food. We've been lied to our whole lives. Marijuana's definitely one of them. You heard about the endocannabinoid system? I shouldn't have to be up here. The endocannabinoid system's responsible for homeostasis. Homeostasis is the everything, doctor. You know, that is cells' function. If it's temperature, if it's on or off, if it lives or dies, if it replicates. Homeostasis on a cellular level, everything. It's, it's powered by cannabinoids. That's why it fixes... You watch the testimonials, it fixes Parkinson's, it cures cancer. It fixes everything. Why are we even having this meeting? You know, why? Is it because you're still being paid by that same control system? Or you just haven't done your research? If you would just get online and look for a second what this plant does? My goodness, it's unbelievable. It, every vertebrate on the planet has an endocannabinoid system. Your dog has one. Your bird has one. We all benefit from this plant. The plant's only 34 million years old. The endocannabinoid system is 600 million years old. Chicken and egg, which one came first? The plant came along to help us. And that we're actually having this debate? Shame on you. Shame on you for holding down the cure to everything. I mean, that thing about Big Pharma doesn't want the cure? That isn't a joke. You can grow this cure in your backyard. And it's a cure-all. Why are we doing this? You can die from drinking too much water. You can't from marijuana. Doesn't that tell you anything? This is really, really outrageous. Someday, your grandmom might be sick. Your dog might be sick. Mine was recently. It was bad. It was thousands in vet bills due. You know what saved her life? And it only took a week. Dogs have very fast metabolisms. Humans, it takes 60 days. You can bring back t- terminal stage IV cancer. And you're wondering if it might help? It helps everything. What are you doing? What are you doing, guys? Seriously? What, wh- why? I'm sorry you have to do this to, to the later than say no and hurt people, because you're hurting people. You're hurting people by saying no. That's all you're doing. I wish, I wish you do do the right thing. And, um, and help. I mean, you're a doctor. Look into it. Look into the endocannabinoid system and story's over. We should be eating it every day of our life. All of us. Daily, you should be eating the leaf. You should know that. You should be eating it as a supplement. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Kimberly Drawn, please.
Do I speak this way or speak to you? Whatever I want.
So it's probably different.
Okay, thank you, sorry. Hi, good afternoon. My name is Kimberly Drawn. I am representing, uh, Phoenix Normal. I'm a volunteer for Phoenix Normal. Normal being the national organization for the reform of marijuana laws. As well... I'm a little nervous. As well as I'm a state representative for the state, uh, chapter of Normal as well. I'm here to represent, obviously, Normal and Normal people. Um, I'm here, I'm a citizen of the United States, and I live in Arizona. Born originally in New Jersey. And I'm here to talk about depression. Depression is a normal thing for Normal people. For women, I remember earlier, I listened to doctors talk. I listened to regi- registered nurses speak, as well as veterans. Uh, men, women, young people, old people, all Normal people. I know that we're talking about migraines, as well as post-traumatic stress disorder and depression. Um, I feel that Normal people go through and have experienced those things. I know, uh, uh, primarily, we want to support the veterans that go through post-traumatic stress disorder. But I represent women and people that have all gone through those things. I personally have gone through and have experienced depression, as well as migraines, because of life experiences. Life experiences cause post-traumatic, uh, stress, as well as depression. Um, uh, I hope that people, I understand that people that I represent want a safer alternative to things that have been recommended to cure, uh, depression. And they're addictive, as well as, uh, narcotic. So I believe that cannabis is a safer alternative, that Americans want something to help with these disorders, being depression, as well as post-traumatic stress disorder. And, uh, we, we definitely want to support, uh, that as a condition to cure that, or to at least ail that. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. It is now 12:00 PM. This concludes our public hearing on adding debilitating medical conditions. Thank you for your comments. You may submit written comments as discussed before. Computers are located outside the room as you exit near security. Thank you.